Inability to attend, so she may pop up at any moment. But we have a quorum here. Here we go. Yeah, okay. Hi. Okay, so we're starting the meeting. We have four out of five members here. John Martin, Mary Ann Remy, Heath Salat, and myself, Eric Worth, the chair. So we have a quorum. Our fifth member Laura Bozzi may appear at any time. The first thing on the agenda tonight is to continue the hearing regarding Seventeen Parsonage Street. This is the hearing that began last, at the last meeting two weeks ago. And now, Mary Ann, you were not present at the last meeting. Have you viewed the video of that meeting?
Yes, I did.
Do you feel that you could participate now in the rest of the hearing?
I do.
Okay.
I, I listened to, I watched the video and I've read, you know, all the documents and heard the feedback and, and listened to the concerns as well as the positive feedback that were expressed at the, at the meeting two weeks ago.
All right, that's great. Mark and Marissa, do you object to Mary Ann joining us for the, for the rest of the hearing? You're muted. Mark and Marissa, you're muted.
Can you hear us? Okay?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Sorry, you, you broke up a little bit. I don't know if it was our connection or what, but I tried to make sure that we heard what you said. Sorry.
Mary Ann, could you?
Oh, what I said?
What I said?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mary Ann, I didn't hear anything. It kind of froze, yeah, so.
Oh, okay. What I said was that I, I looked at the video of the last meeting and I, you know, I've read through all the materials and I, you know, heard the, the comments in support of the changes that you wanted to make, plus the concerns that were expressed, especially those about the neighborhood. And I also walked around your neighborhood, so if you saw somebody sort of lurking outside your front door with a brown dog, that was me. So I, I, I feel ready to discuss this further and come to a decision, but Eric was asking you if you were comfortable with that.
Yes, that's right. That's, so the question is for you. You're okay with her participating then?
Oh, yes, of course, yeah.
For some reason, I don't know if it's our internet connection, but the, the audio kind of breaks and we couldn't hear anything. Now I think it's
I think we're back, yeah.
Okay. So I'll just summarize the new developments since the first part of the hearing. We received one additional comment from a member of the public, and that was a comment that supports the application. I'll read it. It's from William Mazuka, and it reads, "I, William Mazuka, reside at Twenty-two Parrot Street, whose property's backyard borders the backyard of Seventeen Parsonage Street, and I am in favor of and support this application. As one travels up and down Parsonage Street, it is obvious that very few properties, if any, meet the front yard setbacks. Additionally, many structures sit right on the sidewalk, as is the case throughout our village. The addition to the front of the house will not adversely affect the character of that street, but rather will further enhance the character. Since moving into this house, Mark and Marissa have made wonderful improvements to the house and property, all top quality. Therefore, I respectfully request that the ZBA grant the requested variance." All right, and then, in addition to that, the applicants submitted to us an updated, an updated site plan, which covers the matter that the board asked about at the last meeting, which is lot coverage. The, the new site plan shows the width of the proposed front entrance, roofed entrance, and that's eight feet wide, and it shows the total coverage of the lot by buildings, which is, will be twenty-eight point five after the proposed addition. And that is short, that's less than the maximum, permitted maximum, so there's no need for a variance or, there's no difficulty on that, on that aspect. The new site plan is a little clearer to read as well, a little clearer to visualize the, the addition. Are there, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak? Any new participants? New comments? I guess not.
Eric, could I ask, there, there is one dial-in phone number. By chance, could we just check to see if that's Laura who's joined us?
It's muted. Now it's gone.
Now it's gone, okay. It's worth a shot.
Let me check my email and see if there's anything from her. No, nothing, nothing. Do board members have any new comments or new questions? I don't know if any of you had got a chance to walk by the property and look at it firsthand.
I mean, I, I was able to, to see it for a second time and, and, you know, feel comfortable.
John, you have a comment? You're muted, John.
I went by the property several times over the last week to just get a feeling of what it was like, you know, in the morning light and the, you know, the afternoon light and, you know, to see what the other properties, how they sat on the street, you know, what their improvements were that were close to whether there were porches and single-story or, and how far in fact they were setback. So I took a good look, including neighboring and, and, you know, the cross streets, like right across the street from the brick house that's maybe venture on its way to Parrot, that particular cross street. So I've looked around.
Do any board members have questions, further questions for the applicants?
Eric, this is Laura. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Hi, Laura.
Great. Hi, I'm so sorry. I joined a few minutes late and I, my reception's coming in and out, but I should be able to join by computer in just a few minutes, but I'm, I'm on the phone and listening.
Okay. Laura, did you have a chance to watch the video of the hearing last, last time?
I did. I got to watch the hearing and I took a walk by the house. So I'm relatively caught up from the last meeting.
All right. Mark and Marissa, this is our fifth board member Laura Bozzi. Do you object to her participating in the rest of the hearing?
No.
No, all right, great, so. Do you, Mark and Marissa, do you have any further comments for us? You'd like us to take into account?
The only thing that I would like to add is, we have received support from our Judith, who is to the right of us, a nineteen, and then across the street from Donna and Gary as well, and both of them offered to write a letter or come, and they said, "Well, also, we know maybe no news means that we're in support of it, so we, you know, we didn't want to put them out, so we said that." But I did, I did want to share that since they will be, you know, obviously, maybe not the most impacted, but, you know, they're right, both within view. At least Judith would be, you know, other than John's property. So I did want to share that, and I don't have anything else. Do you?
No, just, I mean, to me, to my knowledge, I think the full support of the street by either verbal to us or by letter or people that kind of joined the meeting, last meeting, a few weeks back, and, you know, to my knowledge, there was just one objection was on the other street, and I think we kind of talked about that a couple weeks ago, but I, you know, I, I feel like the support of the neighbor, neighbors is present.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion that we close the public hearing? I believe there's no more business that's part of the hearing.
Eric, I was going to ask a quick question. Which, which was it, their next-door neighbor? Is it the one further to the north or to the south?
To the south. Judith and Jennifer are immediate, shares the driveway, well, driveways right around, against their, their property line.
So they're the, they're the house that's closest to the barn?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
And my last question, Eric, to you, is for the people who are, you know, Mary Ann and Laura who are just joining, do they want any kind of synopsis of the, you know, the whole proposal? If that's necessary, if they don't think it's necessary, you know, and they have looked at everything, then I don't think there's anything further to, to go on in this hearing.
I, I don't, I don't feel it's necessary. It was explained really well and, on the video, and I reviewed the materials.
All right. Laura, do you need any, any clarifications?
Um, maybe, I, I know that it was discussed, but it would help me, I think, to hear again just the, a brief synopsis on the justification for choosing the front versus an alternative to back or, or some other, some other solution.
From us?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 from, from, from the applicant, thank you.
Yeah, for, the, the way the, the house is set in the back, there's a covered porch and there's, is like a structure there, and our kitchen is facing completely there. There's a big window and obviously when we had made the modification several years back, you know, we hadn't planned, you know, completely like years and years ahead, and we would feel that destroying this, this old backyard and, and living space outside would be very painful to us, like in many respects. And so that's the, the main reason. There was another reason that we preserved like a, a small wall that we're, we were told was potentially a hundred years plus years old, and it's a stone wall that's kind of like, I guess, limit our covered porch. So that was part of it as well, but the main, the main reason for us is really keeping our living space outdoor there and not destroying the artwork that we put on there. And going to the front, obviously, it's like in a new space for day-to-day lives to us. So it's much more, makes much more sense to, to have, add like the living space and we can enjoy the inside, which we don't enjoy the outside anyways. So that was part of our, you know, plan.
You have a really good picture that shows that. That's why, like, it was really clear to me. There's a, a great picture of the back and then of that, I think I saw the little wall in person, if, if I'm not mistaken, but also the picture of the wall that you're talking about.
Thank you for restating that, that's helpful.
I would, I would just kind of interject that I, I interpret this proposal as in a way, trying to cope with, even though it doesn't, as, as a, a typical example of homeowner trying to cope with the narrow size of the lots in cold spring, typical a representative type of narrow lots, and if you want to expand, your, your options are few. In this case, they can't expand to the sides. It's a narrow lot and, and they are, you know, their, their options are, are very limited.
And if I could, just to confirm, I mean, first of all, to go with what you're saying, Eric, in order to access the garage to the rear, the driveway has to pass through, and so that's why they really can't expand there, and they're pretty much against the border to the south, what would be to the north. So the driveway's to the south. And from what I can see on their building plans, it appears that the new kitchen area in the back, it does have a second story already, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and what would be the distance between the back wall of the, the back room where the kitchen is, as you, you're saying, between that and that stone wall? That's not indicated. It, it is, is there a measurement on that?
I believe it's about, I think it's about eleven, ten or eleven feet.
Okay, and that's covered, though. That's a covered patio porch, right? Back porch?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, good. So it's eleven feet between that back wall of the building and the stone wall? And that's something the historic board said it would be what they would want to preserve? Said accurate to your knowledge?
I didn't, I
I don't think so. I don't think that
No.
No.
Board yet, at board yet.
Okay, and so, and the last thing is in the front, the distance, we, we looked, I, I think it's two point four feet or is, might be a little bit less than, Eric, we discussed that the last time, what was the distance between the covered portion of, the front porch to the property line?
Um, yeah. It's not shown on the plan, but we can deduce it. Marissa and Mark, do you have a?
Yeah, do you want me to share the screen?
Yeah.
It would be right here, right, two, two feet, four inches?
Well, that's to the sidewalk, but the dotted line is the property line, right?
Right. So that's four feet, three inches from the structure, but if you deduct the, the three feet of the proposed porch, front porch, then it's one foot, three inches.
Okay, so the
Because we, we have to get that figure right, and that's what we would have to work off of, right, Eric, I believe?
Yes, well, that, yeah. So the front, the covered porch in front is one foot, three inches from the property line. But the, the, the face of the addition itself is four feet, three inches.
Yes.
And that, that's the, the larger, obviously, the lar, larger, has the larger impact on the street.
Is the broader addition?
Yes.
The, the bigger portion? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because we, I, I know we discussed it in the last meeting, and I'm not sure if it was notated anywhere, but obviously it's now, at least again on the record of, you know, a, a discussion as to it. And I don't have any further questions that I can see right now.
Okay, then, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second then?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, that's a unanimous vote. So the public hearing is closed and the board will now discuss the, try to come to, create a balancing test, weigh the five factors. Does anyone want to start by just, does anyone have a a, a kind of ten, a leaning, one way or the other on this application? Is there anything you would like to just put a stake in the ground or at least hypothetically?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's, for me, my, you know, somewhat that's centering my, me with my ballast is the community support. And, and, you know, that which is not just the neighbor's support, but in hearing of the support, I think it's also the, the speaking to the benefit of, of this, of the applicant's change.
You mean the benefit to them?
To, to the, to the addition, to the community, to the street.
Oh, okay, the benefit to the community.
And Heath, in what way would you, could you specify more?
Sure, yeah, and I, I realize that, you know, as I say that, one, just again, I'm stressing that, you know, this one, I, I'm digesting a lot of community support for it. The benefit to me for the community is, is, you know, likeness to the rest of Cold Spring, and I understand that, you know, the uniqueness of, of this part of, of our community is indifference to the likeness of the, you know, the frontages in the rest of the village. But the property value and benefit is what I'm referring to.
I mean, I agree with you, Heath, on the community support from what I'm hearing. And you know, having taken a walk through the neighborhood, you know, my impression offhand was that, you know, most of the, the homes were set back about ten feet. You know, there were few, you know, a few exceptions, the, the neighbor to the north, the brick structure, two plots away on the corner, and then right across the street from there, the other brick building, and then there were one or two buildings that go further west along that were close to the front, and for those that were really close to the street, apart from the brick buildings, the portion of the homes that were closest to the street, and they were usually set back by about a few feet, were single-story enclosed porches. And so, you know, from what I saw in general, like just walking up and down the street, was that the, the vast majority of the homes were pretty much set back, and if they were close at all, they were close with a single-story porch. So personally, I see there's a distinction with this application. You know, seeking a little bit more in the way of bulk, and in this case, you know, closer to the property line than many of the other properties. I would say seventy percent of the other properties I saw in the neighborhood. So I'm a little more concerned about it under those circumstances, and I'm trying to, you know, weigh it all and, and listen to everybody.
And everything you just shared makes, makes sense, and I'm in a, you know, in alignment with, with what you pointed out.
You know, I, I walked by several times, went across, you know, multiple times during the week, just to get an impression of what the additional bulk coming out from the building would be, and up against the street, you know, looking back up and down the street. And the one point I find also that was, you know, point out is the nature of this lot being confined to a narrow space. The, the lot itself is narrow. So the options are slim to go build to the north or the south. And all property owners want to optimize their property if they can, you know, afford to do so, and, you know, that's a good thing. What this zoning code does in general is it recognizes that some people would really like to optimize, and the only reason why the zoning code is here is to put down area restrictions. You know, so that's what, these are, these are the competing facets that are going on with this, this particular case. You know, you got the narrow lot, you got the community support, and then you have the zoning code, and some of the buildings that I referenced to, like the one just immediately to the north of the applicant, and the brick buildings, and all the other ones that are so close to the road, they all pre-existed the code. And the code itself is trying to get us in a direction where we're sort of making it more community and a little bit more space-like. I mean, that's the way I interpreted it. I mean, the code is looking to bulk issues. And now, when a, when a person buys a piece of property, you know, they're getting what, you know, it, it, in the contracts, it always says, you know, you're, you're buying what is. They're making no other guarantees. It's what you see, is what your inspector sees and everything. This is what you're getting. And so when you go to develop a property, if you want to develop it further, you have to take the whole scope of what your project might be in advance. So, you know, a property owner might want to have a really nice backyard and then push out to the front. Or they have to weigh whether or not they can get that kind of a variance. And, you know, before they start constructing, you know, to the rear. And, I mean, these are all the things like, you know, our board will have nothing to say about it, and then we're presented with a set of issues. So all of a sudden, the property owner has developed it in a way that they developed it, and then all of a sudden, you know, it comes to us on seeking what would be comparative to the rest of the street, you know, fairly substantial variance. You know, it's in to the community character. That's, that's my general statement about what the zoning code is about, what the narrowness, the lot is about, you know, the plans themselves, their beautiful plans. All right, it, it has nothing to do, you know, the bulk is a separate issue. I mean, the design is a nice design, it's a very nice design, I think, you know, but I'm not the historic board, so. These are the, all the factors that we're, I'm trying to weigh. And that's, that's all I'm going to say about it.
Yeah, you, you make a lot of good points, and I think the key one is, for, in my mind, what I'm trying to clarify is how I feel about the, as you correctly said, most of the homes there are set back a little bit, and there is that spacious feel, that quasi-suburban feel, which is, is the character, that is the character of the neighborhood, and we are, part of our task is to not disrupt the character of the neighborhood without a good reason. So I'm trying to get a handle for my own feelings, my own impressions. How much of a, how significant is that character? That, that spacious setback feeling that most of the properties have? How essential is that to the character? And what is the loss if one home is allowed to, to disrupt that through an addition? And I'm not sure how I feel. This, luckily, the street, that is the, the actual street itself is, is quite wide. Parsonage Street is, has, is a very wide street and with generous sidewalks, so that, and that's part of that whole suburban spacious feel up there. So the, the, this, the character does not depend solely on front yard setbacks. The wideness of the street helps maintain that, that historic, the historic, traditional feel of, of that neighborhood. And that, I think that weighs in favor of the application. Do the other, other board members who walked the block, what do you, what's your feeling about the, that question of, to what extent does do modest front yards, like little significant, like front yards that are, they're, they're small, but they are, but they are real? To what extent does that contribute, and should that be protected?
One, one thing that, that I noticed as I was walking around and is that a lot of, you know, times people will have a, like a retaining wall right up to the sidewalk, or I think in, in the way your current house is, there's a hedge, like right, right up to the sidewalk, and so, so I don't get that open feeling, but then that may be me, and I really haven't lived here that long, honestly, so. And also, when I, when I just walk around the village, and I walk like several blocks around, one of the things about this village is there is a surprise every time you go around a corner, and there's, things are so different everywhere you go, that I don't see a cohesive feel to that street in terms of a spacious quality. I, I don't get that when I walk down that street. So, from my perspective, moving into that space between the house and the street doesn't disrupt it.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Eric, you made a point in the last meeting about how it is different than in the lower village where there are, you know, a good number of passes that come right, right up to the front. So at first, you know, that resonated with me with, with what John was saying of kind of what, what is noting what's typical of, of what's on parsonage. But, you know, I think some, something that Marianne is saying is that there's, there's something, there is a variation, even on, you know, I live on Garden Street, and some of the houses are right up close, and some of them are further away. I think the danger, we don't want all of the houses to be up in front, you know. But I, I do, you know, I, I hear her point about it being that there's something that's typical is, is a very, is, is kind of a varied placement on the, on the lot.
That, that struck me as well, the cohesion point, and, you know, the reminder of hedges or fences online.
Okay, well, that's, that's a convincing point for me, noting that diversity or variety is itself a character that is present on every street in this village. And so it's, it's a kind of artificial to try to enforce a uniform to, to, yeah, enforce a uniform character in a, in a neighborhood.
If I might add, Eric, but the last thing I would mention is these homes are small, pretty much, up and down the street. You know, relatively speaking, and the question is, is going down in the future, for some of the homes that are close up or have single porches out in front, if they wish to expand their house, they point to this as an example. Because many of the lots are similar, they're all narrow, relatively speaking. And you know, they would say, well, you know, the house we're in is too small. And then the question is, is, there's, you know, there's a possibility, there's a possibility that, you know, this would be something that you wouldn't be able to grant one person, deny another.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why we have to determine what is the character of the neighborhood here, because we want to preserve it. And we don't want to do something that, but I think we could grant something like this, or this board over time could grant. I, I don't know, I, I don't know, actually. I mean, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna take each application on its own terms. So it's hard to know how that would play out.
I just wanted to bring, I just wanted to raise the point, that's all.
It's a, I'll say it's a concern that I have too, and trying to think of, we often think about what's, what's, makes a application distinctive. What, what is the particular case that we're using for this variance? And so I've been trying to figure out, is there something that is exceptional, or whatever distinctive in this, that is the reason that we would do it in this case, but we wouldn't do it in all cases? And so, you know, I'd really be interested in others' thoughts as we go through the balancing of where that might be, and whether that is the case or whether it's not, and for me, that, that's an important factor in the decision.
Yeah, I haven't thought through that, and to your point, Laura, one of the first things that comes to mind might be if we were thinking through a different situation, on a very separate situation where the addition was about a separate living quarter versus something that was a part of the rest of the house, that would certainly change the conversation for me. You know, and I'm just throwing that out as, as probably as an odd example, but to that point, I think it, there's a lot more thought that can go into that situation, but for the merit of this discussion, I, I appreciate the thought and the discussion around, you know, the character of the neighborhood with regards to ensuring that we aren't, like, trying to enforce the uniformity, as, as just a thought in our discussion.
Yeah, when I look at the houses, you know, they're up and down the street, you know, where they have, you know, porches, and sometimes they're open, and then sometimes they're closed. It just does not appear to be as, you know, front-end bulked as, you know, other projects, and the only exception I can, if I can think about it, if I can find, try to find an exception with this property and, and the proposed construction and design, would be that they're not shooting for a complete bulked out from top, from the first floor to the top floor, and moving it completely forward. You know, so what they're doing is they're taking a portion of the width of the current front structure. They're not taking the entire portion of it, but they're also doing a sloped roof from the first floor up to the second floor, so it's not a complete bulked image drawn all the way to the street. I mean, I'm trying to find exceptions, you know, to, to just say it's not going to be as bulk bulked out in appearance than if it was a, a complete continuation of the structure. First whole first floor, whole second floor right to the street, with perhaps, say if they wanted to put a two-and-a-half-story addition, so they're, they're entitled to go to 35 feet. You know, so I mean, you might, we might get a proposal one day where they say, well, we want to front-end the whole house. And if we're going to be doing construction, we might as well go up two-and-a-half stories and not just two stories. I mean, anything's a possibility, but I'm trying to find an exception to this where it's not as concerning with the bulk. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I mean, as you're sharing that, John, I'm, I'm like, writing down to check my own biases, when, when we speak to, when Eric points out the suburban feel, you know, one of the reasons I moved to Cold Spring, one of the environmental factors was that it didn't have a suburban feel, so I have to check that bias of my own, and we discuss situations like this. So I appreciate that point being brought up, but I'm also reminding myself not to allow my own personal bias to, yeah.
Well, this is why we have a board. It's, it's so important that everybody, you know, has their own set of viewpoints on it, and why they came to this village, and then looks at the code and looks at the five criteria. And, you know, votes in, you know, in an inhabited way on their own understanding of the, you know, the conglomeration of the factors that are, that are at issue here, including public opinion.
Well, I, I think Laura raised an excellent point by asking, asking just, what is, is there something distinctive about this application that would justify approving it? That, I mean, we are, in approving it, we'd be making an exception. So what is the, kind of the angle that makes it worthy of an exception to the code? What is the distinctive need that, that calls for an exception here? Because we can't just throw the code away and approve it just because someone wants it. There's got to be like a distinctive reason. And I, I'm not sure that there's, it's not, there's not really a, a clear accept, except there is one, but it's one that applies to most houses in the village, which is a tiny house on a, on a cramped lot, and very few options for, for expansion. So that is, I mean, that is a distinctive reason, but it's not, this, I mean, it's a strong reason, but it's not distinctive to this property. It's one that would apply to many houses on this street. So we would have to, in granting this variance, we'd have to be comfortable with the possibility that other applications will come forward similar to this one, maybe on the same street. And but maybe they're all, they're all justified, given, given sufficient, provided that there's a sufficient weight of, of necessity behind the application. I mean, the reason in this case, there, there is considerable necessity, that the backyard is, is a very unfavorable place to, to expand. The side yards offer no space. And there's no upward space either, it's already a two-story structure.
Eric, I would say the other exceptions would be the fact that in this particular community appears that, right within the localized area, the people are, the vast majority are in favor of, from what we've heard. We haven't heard from everybody, but in favor of the application. Whereas if you go into another, if you go into another, two or three blocks away, and if most people came out against it, we'd have to take that into consideration as part of the community character and how people feel about what neighborhood they're living in. So I think that, and perhaps that wall in the back, although we don't have definitive evidence of it, if it does have history to it, I don't know, I'm not sure if we have enough evidence as to that, but that could be viewed as another aspect.
We also heard from the public that, that, which I think may make this be distinctive, is that this would actually be an improvement, that it would, the net result would be an improvement to the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Shall we go through the five factors and see if that clarifies their thinking?
Yeah.
All right. The first question is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance. Marianne, do you want to start?
I don't see it as detrimental to the neighborhood. I think variability is inherent in the, in the neighborhoods, or on the streets in this village, I saw a lot of variability in their block, and and I am impressed that individuals felt as though it would be an improvement.
Keith?
I'm in alignment with Marianne, with no.
Laura?
I, I think I started with a stronger feeling of that it would have a detriment. I think I'm closer to zero, but a little, like, I, I, I do think I think the variability is, is a component of it, but I am recognizing that the current state is that most of the houses don't go up to the street. So I think that there's like a very, perhaps a very small sort of negative weight, but it's, but it's very small to me now.
Okay, John?
You know, I think it has, it's going to have an impact on the neighborhood. I, I believe it will, because it, while there are differing types of homes and how they're situated on properties and plots all around, most of those were, you know, grandfathered in at the time, but, and the code looks to have a certain setback in a feel, so we have to, we have to take into consideration all these elements. You know, the community here in this area is spoken favorably of it. My concern is if it goes forward in the past, I know we look at every application different, and we're trying to distinguish it. I think in the end, I think, you know, I'm, I'm not going to firmly say it has, you know, an absolute, I'm like on the fence about that issue, so I feel I don't, I don't feel strong in either way, in a sense that, at first I was thinking it was going to have an impact. But I, I'm listening to all the evidence and everybody speaking, and so I'm going to be middle of the road on this one.
Well, my view is there, there will be a minor change, and it's undesirable in the sense that it's, it's a disruption of the, of the traditional configuration of the neighborhood, which is predominantly modest front yards, a semi-private feel to the properties. However, I think that the, the harm, the detriment is mitigated by, it's, it's not huge, and the, the width of the street itself, the generosity, the sidewalks, will, will preserve that suburban quality. And so I, I guess, kind of like John, I, I see a minor, I see a kind of medium weight, medium negative weight here. Second question is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. So the benefit here is an expansion of living space. Is there some method, some feasible method that does not require a variance? John, what do you think about that?
Well, due to the narrowness of the lot, and I mean, if they need more space, they could buy another property, but that's not an issue here.
That's not feasible, that's not a feasible alternative.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, so I just see that there are no other, with everything else discussed with regards to the improvements to the back, the, the, the wall, the narrowness of a lot, the driveway immediately to the left of the building, and to the home, and to the north side, there's very minimal space there, there's just, there is nowhere to go at this point with every, all the evidence we've had that's gone into the planning other than going out to the front.
Keith? What are your thoughts on?
I'm gonna, my thoughts were John's echoing those, so I'm a no.
Laura?
I guess for me, recognizing that the improvements in the back were recent, to me, that's, that's important, and I, and I understand the effort and the, and the financial investment that was made, but you know, we, we often talk about, you kind of have to go into owning a property, recognizing its limitations and understanding local its limitations and understanding local laws. And so you know, it sets up the situation where if you want to constrain your options for the ZBA, then you make a change and then say that then the options are constrained. And I know that that wasn't the intent of it, but it puts us in, I think it puts us in that situation. Which that leads me to say like, there is an alternative. It's not, it's not a great one for them, but it is, but is, you know, there's there's area in the back. So so to me, and and to me, that also makes it not, if we're trying to really distinguish this application, it's not a super strong distinction. Of course, the sides, you can't build out on the sides and that that's a, that is something that makes it you know, like the the constraints are very clear. But here it it doesn't feel that constraint doesn't feel as clear to me to be able to say that this application is different than one that would come in the future. And I I have concerns with that. So I would say that that there is there is an alternative. But there are and I understand the investment that the applicants made that brings them to to ask for a variance.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I actually agree with both John and Laura. But for me, the weight goes to no.
I would add a couple of minor angles to this. The I mean it's, I think it's appropriate to bring sustainability considerations of sustainability into this and it's it would be wasteful and and just destructive to tear out one kind of structure to replace it with another. And that's, that's a definite, that reduces the feasibility of the idea of a building in the back. And and a second angle is that the their kitchen is there occupying the back of the of the current house. So it makes it, it's very difficult to add a bedroom or whatever they want, any kind of other room on the other side of the kitchen. And that's not, you know, would result in an unhappy layout and impractical layout. So I I would, I come down on the side of no feasible alternative. I mean, really, the only alternative is to not do anything and that's, but that's not, that's not a true alternative. The number three, question three is whether the requested area variance is substantial. And I'll start just by saying that I I think it is substantial. We're going from a setback of a front yard setback currently of fourteen feet, nine inches. And and with the addition, we will be down to one foot, three inches if you count, if you count from the front entrance porch, or if you want to be a little more lenient and count from the the face of the addition, then that's four feet, three inches. So that's a reduction of at best a third or two thirds rather. Roughly, or more than two thirds. So that is substantial, no matter how, in my view, no matter how you slice it. John, what do you think?
I think it's very substantial and it's a situation that's unlike perhaps eighty percent of the immediate neighborhood. I think it's just it's just that way. You know? I looked at most of the other homes on there, seventy percent of them are at least ten feet off the property line. Yeah, whether it's the porches or the beginning with the porches, really, other than the next door neighbor and the buildings, the two brick corner buildings down to south and two homes to the immediate west of that brick building across the street. So I'm just looking at it comparatively and that's it.
Mary Ann?
Yes, it's substantial.
Yes, I agree. Substantial.
Yes, it is. The scale of the setback makes it substantial.
Okay, question four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Heath, why don't you start?
I'm a, I'm a no for the adverse effect. And you know, I not to reiterate the same points, but it's it's the community support and I think the, you know, the aesthetics, the character, that's the in the, you know, personally, the thoughtfulness of the design for the for this part of the community.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Eric, would you mind reading that point again?
Not at all. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. So this is number one, question number one deals with a negative impact, but but toward the character of the neighborhood. And this question, number four, deals with negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions. So somewhat similar, but this is specifically the physical or environmental conditions.
You know, such as light or airflow or you know, runoff, any any of those issues?
I'd say no.
Okay. John?
I don't think it has a significant impact. I don't think it'll there'll be a little bit of diminishment in the space and light. But it's, I think it's in part offset by the nice design of the structure, the front end structure. And the runoff has been explained how it will be you know, handled by bringing this, the water to the street by whatever method that they choose, the three examples or two examples they gave us.
Laura?
When I took a walk by, I was thinking about how it it will affect the sightlines for some of the neighbors that are that are further back, but they didn't mention it and 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 otherwise, it is a quite open street. So I don't I I would say no, I don't think it has a an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions.
I agree with everyone. No adverse effect. Number five. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. And Laura, why don't you start with that one?
Sure. I I think our typical answer is that it is, it's self-created, that it's a, it's a choice that the applicant makes to make a change to their home. So, so yes.
John?
Yeah, I think so as well. You know, when you buy a property, you buy it as is and you see what it is and if you have a purpose in mind, you see it how small it is from the start. You then have to figure out what your plan would be with the knowledge of what the community development restrictions pursuant to the code requirements would allow you to seek. And so it's self-imposed.
Mary Ann?
Yes, it's self-imposed.
Yes, it is.
I agree. Okay, those are the five factors. I'll go back and summarize my understanding of of the consensus. Generally, there was agreement, I believe, on on the questions. Number one, undesirable change in the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. There was some disagreement there. The answers ranged from none to a kind of medium, middle range of of harm. So this this answer probably had the greatest variation. And it seems to be the the one, the question that is really the key, the key to this decision. To what extent? To what extent, there will be a change, no doubt about it. This this addition will really have an impact. The question is whether it's detrimental or undesirable. And that's, that's the key. The key thing. And we do have some variation on that. Question number two. Any feasible alternative there pretty uniformly, it was either the answers were no or any, any alternative, any feasible alternative was not great. And yeah. And number three, substantial there, there was strong agreement that it is substantial. So number four, adverse effect to physical or environmental conditions, the uniform answer was no. And number five, self-created, uniform answer was yes. So we have number one, ways maybe slightly against the application. Number two, ways in favor of the application, no feasible alternative. Number three, ways against the application, strongly against, that's the substantial. Number four, ways in favor of the application and number five, against, but only weakly, in a weak way, that is number, the self-creation test is most applications are self-created, most difficulties. And so that's not a strong negative. So we have one minor against, one in favor, one strongly against, another one in favor and a fifth one, weakly against. So the the biggest negatives are the substantiality of the application. It's really, it makes a huge, takes a huge bite out of that setback. But I think it's useful to keep in mind that the the property already is non-compliant. The set, it already has close to, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet and it's at fourteen feet, nine inches already. So we're talking about we're talking about difference of degree here. And then the the other, the other great negative, or not great negative, but the other negative, which ranges from minor to to medium is the detrimental effect on the neighborhood. Would anyone like to propose a balancing statement? In other words, which essentially is a motion, a motion whether to approve or deny. And and that motion would incorporate a balancing statement about final, how to synthesize these, these considerations.
I'll propose that we we do so.
So you propose approving, right?
Correct. Thank you.
Can you articulate a statement that?
I I, let me clarify. I thought we, I thought what I was proposing was that we would, we would give a final simply proposing that then that we would weigh in in giving a final approval or or not.
All right. Well, that's good. Then let's let's see where, what we can come up with.
Okay.
Something that takes account of, I mean, what we're looking at is balancing the community, the 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 rights of the community, harm to the community, if any, against the benefit of the applicant. And it's worth maybe refreshing, reminding ourselves about the position the applicant is in, a tiny house on a cramped lot. And 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 trying to make the best of that to to obtain a, not a, not a trivial benefit, but a genuine reasonable benefit.
Yeah, I agree with that. And it's a balancing test is, or a balancing statement is what we need to have. In the end, you know, if it's ever brought to a court, if if a balancing statement hasn't been made, it's a problem for the board in a sense that it's required. So you know, in balance, as I see everything, including the community response, the the narrowness of the lot, there's some concerns and how it was developed over time. Again, the property is taken as is with regards to the five factors. It is substantial. It won't have necessarily an impact on the physical conditions or you know, issues of runoff or environmental issues. It doesn't present that that the, it has been reasoned by the board that it is not you know, terribly, well, it's a substantial improvement being sought in the variance. It's not going to have a community, terrible community impact, you know, and that, you know, terribly adverse impact. And and again, the neighbors already have spoken in this area. And you know, I I think on the whole, I would agree with Heath that I'd be in favor of approving this request for a fairly substantial area variance, mostly for the way I see it, the one thing that's a turning point for me a little bit right now is that the design is a, is a nice design and it's, it's not a complete box out brought forward to the street. And I think we can distinguish it perhaps from other applications by all the points that were raised with regards to the the newness of the improvement to the rear. Maybe better planning could have been done. In my, and it's, it's hard to force this on the board than to make these adjustments with the limitations we have under the zoning code. But then there's also that wall, there's the narrowness. So when I look at everything, it's a close, very close one for me. But I would, I'd vote in favor.
And if I could just add on to that, because I'm in lockstep with what what John has shared, when I look at the totality of of the lot as well, the conservation of the alternative. If the alternative to go back in the lot, in my opinion, you know, non-scientific, but just from my opinion, environmentally, more is being done to conserve that space in the totality than what's being done at the front of a lot, at the 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 street side portion of the lot. So I I see a benefit in that as well.
You're saying conserving of the open space in back is a virtue in itself?
Personally, I feel that way. Yeah.
And if I, and that's good, that's a good point. He, and what I was, I forgot to mention. I think a big aspect of this is the breadth of the street. The houses won't seem to be hovering over each other on either side of the road if everybody were built out in the same fashion. So I think the street brings, brings a point of an added point of why we might be allowing it in this case, the breadth of the street.
I would add, I I agree with all those comments and I would add a further point that I would add, I agree with all those comments, and I would add a further point that for me, the sticking point all along was whether the traditional quasi-suburban nature of the neighborhood was, was going to be diminished. But I've increasingly have, have been less concerned about that as I see the as I see, it's not so black and white. It's not so black and white that this neighborhood is quasi-suburban. There is variability. And variability is itself a positive quality, which is not diminished by this addition. The diminish, the addition simply adds another variation. And so I feel less and less concerned about that, that particular, but and that for me was all along the biggest concern.
So Eric, we have two people in favor. I mean, I'm just saying that that's what Keith and I have said at this point. But everybody has to weigh in.
Marianne and Laura, do you have? Do you, are you inclined to go against anything that's been said and, and lean toward a negative, a vote of denying?
I agree with what's been said, and, and I, I would not deny this application. And I would, I like the, the point about retaining the open space in the backyard. I think that's a really good point. And also would add about the support of the neighbors who feel as though this would be an improvement.
I, I still have concern that this is a, a large variance to give, and one that I think you know, that, that then we could see other people say, well then, you know, I'd like one also, because I have a small lot and I want to make my, my home bigger. So I guess I'm, I'm really concerned about that. But I, I I hear all of these other good points. And, and I think it's, I think it's a beautiful proposal. I think it's the one that is, that I think is the most elegant solution. It's just you know, requires a large variance. And so I think in that, I guess I'm looking, you know, I often look at John and Eric as, as those who have been here longer and have seen a lot of applications come through. And if this doesn't raise that, that concern to you, then I, I can support, support the overall, you know, kind of the majority of the board in its decision in favor.
Yeah. It's the, the question of precedent is a slippery one. We, we cannot downgrade an application simply because we're concerned about others, about others emulating it. Because that is not, it's not an applicant's fault if what somebody in the future might do, because that's not a fact. That's just speculation. We can't, it's not fair to an applicant to to deny them because of mere speculation. So so I, I but at the same time, so that's, the, the other face of that coin is if you do grant an application like this, if we do approve it, we are changing the character of the neighborhood through that action, so that the next applicant that comes will have a different neighborhood, will be presenting us with different evidence. So we're kind of like changing the, the facts on the ground in a way that will that will change, that will provide a different playing field for future applications. So it is fair to take, keep that in mind. And that's not the same thing as as denying on the basis of precedent. It's, and this I think is the valid point you're making, Laura, that if we grant this, we are changing the playing field. And other, other applicants will have, will be living in a different neighborhood than they are today, slightly different. So that is, that's, that's why we, that, that number one question is a detriment to the neighborhood, to the character of the neighborhood. If we like what this does to the neighborhood, if it's not a problem, then then Laura, would it be so bad if future applicants came forward and wanted to build out on the front? Is that such a bad thing on the street?
I mean, we talked about it in terms of variation. So I suppose you don't want every every house to do it. I think then it goes against the community character, and it probably also starts to add, it start to affect the physical and environmental conditions. So, so I could, you know, I could see that. I could see that being the case, less green space.
I think that's an interesting raises, an interesting scenario. If, if we grant this application because variability, it, it supports the character of variability, then what if everybody else on the block comes forward with the same application and very, and then at a certain point, there's a tipping point where we have to start denying because we're saying you're destroying the virtue of variability. You know, the, the ninth out of 10 people comes to us, all eight, all of the other eight have all added the additions. And then the ninth one comes. And we, at that point, we say, we can't give it to you. That's, that would be legitimate, because the character of the neighborhood has changed. And the, each new application, even though it's the same as the ones that came before, is, is being held up against a different neighborhood. Different comparison. So I think that would be what a future board would be allowed to do, and that would protect variability. So our granting this application does not send us down a slippery slope of being forced to permit every house on the block to have an addition like this.
I think we should have to, we have to word, you know, I was, I was initially on the other side of where I, I said this was a very close case, and I was very, very concerned about it. And I listened to all the evidence. And I think what we do is we really have to word this resolution, however we vote on it as a whole in the end. That we have, I personally have a lot of concerns with it. I, you know, I think that the character of the neighborhood would change if everybody starts bulking out the houses. You know, I've lived in neighborhoods, you know, down in Westchester County, where people would buy small lots and want to put in the, the old term McMansions. This may not necessarily be that, but the lot is narrow, and the house for the size of a lot is being maximized. The structure on that size lot. Maybe not necessarily to the rear. You know, they're trying to preserve open space there, but again, what we're working with at all times, and you know, Laura brings up very good concerns, and all these concerns I have. Because I, as I said in answering that one issue, that as far as whether or not the variance requested is substantial, I said very substantial. This is this is, you're going right up to the property lot, you're a foot away. You know, maybe, maybe a few inches, and it's a spare in addition. It's, it's asking, it's a big ask. And again, you know, it, you know, nobody wants to see be the bad guy on the board, you know, you know, for your neighbors or whoever's making the application and but the thing is, you know, every one of our board members come onto the board, you know, we all take an oath that we're going to uphold the code the best way we can under the circumstances under each case. And, and so we're having to address these issues, and we're having to do the right thing by it and reason them out, which is exactly what you're doing, Eric, Laura, you know, Marianne, we're all doing this, Heath, you know, so I think that the resolution, however it turns out, has to be shown, this is a very close case.
Can you put your finger on? If you're, John, if you're still tipping toward approval, can you put your finger on what it is, like what reason allows you to approve despite the very good point you're making?
It's purely you know, I think, I don't even want to specify what the application was, but there was once a time where somebody had come before us asking for something that personally, I would never approve of again, and I would admit that we made a mistake. And, you know, and in that particular application, because of the, you know, negative discourse that went back and forth between the parties and some of the people who were present on the Zoom, that two board members quit. They didn't want to deal with it anymore. They said, this is, this is ridiculous. We're doing this. We're asked to, by the village to do something and so on. So where my position is today is again, I'm hearing that the community at large doesn't have a particular, and then Marianne pointed out that one community member said that it would likely be an improvement or enhance the values of the homes in the neighborhood. So, you know, we're hearing all this evidence. And I think what turned me a little bit in the end is that if the community at large does not have a particular concern about this. And they don't think it's going to present a community, an adverse community impact. You know, we're looking at the board, as a board, at the way things are set up. And, and, and we're, we're asked to try to enforce this and preserve the community character through what the code has asked us to follow. You know? And whether or not the detriment to the applicant outweighs what the code is seeking to preserve, you know, if the variance is not granted. So these are, in the end, I think it was the fact that it's the community and and the variableness of what some of the members have referenced to as to some of the different media proximity plots, like for instance, the Redbird Building or the neighbor next door. But what makes this to the north, what makes this a little different again, is that the northern neighbor has just a one-story open, not open, but enclosed, but still just a porch. So again, that's the only reason why I returned to the neighborhood, probably five or six times across this past week, just to try to really get a feel for it, because I was thinking this was a very big substantial variance ask. And I was like, what makes this property different from all the others? And so I was trying to balance out what the community said, that there is some variability in the neighborhood, and that they weren't blocking the complete house first story, second story, right out to the street. You know, putting the building right up in front. They used to do that. They do it on Main Street, but these were all old houses. And the code has said this is now what we're looking for, that the trustees who, who vote for the code, who vote for the provisions that go into it. This is what they've advocated. This is what they told us our job is to do to way. And I don't want to be boring anybody with all this conversation. But these are the confines we work in. And so I found this to be very close. I mean, I could tilt the other way in a second, if somebody offered something else. That's how close it is for me. And if, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, John.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, what you're sharing made me think of just today, right outside this window on Main, is the the jackhammering of the sidewalk. Because guess what? The, and I don't know, this is a fact, but it's the same shape, and now it's dirt as it would be the rectangular space for garden and tree, like there is. And there's an added space. And it, it makes me, the reason I bring that up is you know, I think, you know, I go back to what's distinctive about this app. And, you know, if I'm thinking for, okay, what is distinctive? Some of it is advancing and keeping pace with the community sentiment. And I would bet, I don't know for a fact, but I'm betting that that additional little plot of green space and the potential of a tree being planted, another one on Main Street, has to do with that advancement and the keeping pace of community sentiment. So I think, you know, additionally, what I was learning from our discussion this evening is the thought, the notion around not enforcing uniformity in character within our community. And then for me personally, from the beginning, from, from when we met a couple of weeks ago, the retaining and protecting of open space. And I think, you know, while we can't dictate, you know, or predict that, I, you know, for me largely, this protects more open space by the fact that it's taking up space that moves to the, to the road versus, you know, the back of this particular lot. But what you shared, yeah, and apologies for interrupting you, but it made me think of, of just the community sentiment. And that being the the piece that kind of moved me from, you know, what we have in front of us to where I think you know, I think it's, it's okay for us to ebb and flow with the community. Otherwise, I think, oh, I'm sorry, last thought, Eric. Otherwise, I think, you know, without us and you know, doing this, this thoughtful discussion, you know, you get somebody plug and play the, the diagnostics into the variance test and done, you have it, whether or not it's approved. So that's why I appreciate the board's discussion this evening. I've had a lot of learning.
John, you mentioned that the resolution should be written carefully. Would it be a benefit if the resolution emphasized the weight that the board put on the variability, the diversity of the neighborhood in its, as a way, as a hedge against too many other people coming forward and asking for the same kind of variance with the result in the end of a reduction of, of of diversity?
Well, we can put it in there. It's, it's going to be a tricky thing to enforce. It would be a tough thing to argue perhaps in court, because everybody will say, well,
Yeah.
we're going, we want to optimize our, our property as well. And you, you, you know, we have, we have, we have a right, we know there's a code, but the board has interpreted it such and such. You know, or with regards to this particular street, perhaps. I think what separates us out here is maybe the breadth of the street, the general consensus of the neighbors. It's very tough. Go ahead, go ahead, Laura.
The fact that it doesn't trigger a lot size variance is helpful to me, right? That it's only, we often see one of these setback variances with a lot size variance. And that's not the case here. So and I think, I don't know if you can put that in the resolutions, since we treat each variant separately, but but in my kind of analysis of the situation, that matters.
Absolutely right. Laura, Laura, that's it. That's, that's a big one. You can't build out left, you can't build out right, but they're building, even though they're increasing the improvement, the, the house. They, they don't exceed the 30% ratio. They're still under. Go ahead.
It's in Heath's point about open spaces being conserved. All right, I'm going to write a sentence here, a balancing statement. And then I'll read it to you in a minute. I'll try to incorporate what everyone has been saying. All right, here is, here's the balancing statement. And it's not worded elegantly, but the key thing is whether it gets in all the key points and expresses the logic as follows. Although the variance is very substantial and the encroachment on the front yard may cause some harm to the neighborhood, the harm is debatable because of the diversity and variability of the neighborhood character. And in any case, the harm is outweighed by the strong benefit to the applicants, the fact that only one negative comment from the public was received and the plan's thoughtful conservation of open space.
And that the property is under the 30% maximum coverage. Somewhere we put something, the street is broad. It's not a, it's not a narrow street. So there's still a sense openness in part. And and the, did you, you mentioned that the lot was narrow?
No, I did not.
Yeah. Include everything. And I know you just wrote it up real quick, but.
Yeah, all right. I can, I can add. No feasible.
So Eric, I think we lost.
We can't hear you, John.
John, the points you just made were the width of the street, which preserves a sense of spaciousness and the absence of a feasible alternative. Was there anything else you mentioned in your last comment?
I, I think rather than saying there was only one negative public comment, I would say, you know, the vast majority of responses were in favor of, and having no concerns with regards to the proposed request variance, I mean, in the neighborhood. I think to just say that there was only one negative, I don't think it emphasizes the fact that many more in favor.
How about saying all but one of the public comments supported the application?
Absolutely. And, and, and that the fact that there was significant improvements just recently made to the rear. I mean, that, absent that, I would just say you got to go to the rear.
Yeah. Could we say something there instead, like the narrow lot and the configuration of the house limit? Other placements? Something like that would make me more comfortable.
Okay. Well, I could, I could put the thing about the recent work in the back as part of that. That's one of, one of the reasons there's no feasible alternative.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the fact that, you know, it wasn't just a small improvement. It was probably a fairly substantial cost.
All right, I just, in the chat box, I just posted this, the resulting statement. Again, it's not polished, but see if it covers all the bases.
You sent it out to us, Eric?
Yeah. Can you open up the chat window on your screen?
I see it.
Eric, could you email that to me by any chance, or you couldn't do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thanks. You know, and thank you, Eric, for doing this. It's important. I think that we do it right now because it's, and this is, this is a difficult case. I think somehow it's more difficult than watching Bitcoin fall lately, but just kidding, but I think that we should make it clear somehow, somewhere in there, reach to find reasons, you know, that this is, this wasn't an easy one at all. I'll read your statement now. Thank you. I would say extensive improvements recently made to the rear portion of the, of the house.
Okay.
Rear portion, recently made to the rear portion of the house, as well as you can keep in the fact that they just put in a brand new patio. That could also be part of it.
How about saying rear of the house and backyard?
Yes. Recent, I would add the word recent in there, very recent.
Recently made to the rear of the house and backyard.
Your statement is very good. But you know, whatever anybody else might want to, you know, think that goes in there, should definitely add it.
I appreciate what it covers, yeah.
I think, I think it's really thorough. The, one question I had is in the very first sentence, encroachment on the front may cause some harm. Do we want to say? What kind of harm? Like harm to the character of the neighborhood?
Okay, yeah.
That's a good point to differentiate between the way we fell with the variance test.
And, and also we're not saying it's causing any environmental.
Or, or to a specific neighbor. It's the general character.
Yeah.
Perhaps you could couch it as some concerns with the added bulk to the front within the immediacy of the front property line is really sort of the harm. It's more definitive saying it that way, but unless there's, you can think of other ways of saying it. I, I think I, my impression, my concerns were with the bulk to the front, close to the property line. And the, the nature, the extensiveness of the variance, so on.
And I think Eric's were to the open feel and character of the neighborhood. Which are, I don't know if that's the same thing or not.
That's right. Yeah. And Eric, I was just thinking, and again, just throwing a lot at you, but do we have anything in there that indicates, you know, the, the street is broad? I mean, due to the broad character.
At the end, it's at the, at the very end.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Very well put together.
I've posted a new version and pay a special attention to the first sentence about the neighborhood character.
Can you email me that as well? I'm not adept at, yeah, thanks.
There's a, there's a, John, there's a bar at the, do you see a bar at the bottom with tools?
Hold on. Participants, I have more.
You have, you see chat?
I'm on an iPhone, by the way.
Okay. All right, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Your email works fine. Thank you.
It looks good.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Thanks for putting that together.
Thanks. I don't have anything.
Great. Then if there are no further comments, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for the reasons stated in the last version of the balancing statement.
I'll second that.
John has seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's a unanimous vote in favor of approving the application. So Marissa and Mark, we will draft a resolution. That's the official, the official result and we'll review it at the next meeting and and then assuming we arrive at a final wording, we'll, we'll, we'll approve it then into, at the, well, it'll be, let's see, next meeting is two weeks from now. And then we'll give that to the village clerk and that'll be your official approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So much.
All right. So that's, that ends that. Thanks, Marissa and Mark for sticking with it.
Thanks. And want to say it's great. We appreciate it. You guys work, we understand the process. I think it's valuable and you know, you guys are very thoughtful and very respectful. And so we appreciate the, yeah, the support.
Have a great night.
All right, you too. Thank you. Bye bye.
All right, let's, let's move on to the next item and that is a workshop for 12 Benedict Road.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Sorry you guys had to wait so long, but everybody eventually gets a turn. So the applicants here are Anna and Jeff, Anna Silverlink and Jeff Silverstein. And Laura Eldon is the architectural designer. And this, this is a workshop where we review your application for completeness. We make sure everything is present and and that we don't, and that there are no, nothing missing. And then potentially schedule a hearing and talk about the year, then the kind of notices you have to give, the public notices and so on. So I'll give a second for everybody to call up on their screen copies. We've all received copies of your documents. So this, this application entails a relatively small encroachment on the front yard setback. Much, much, much less of an encroachment than the one we just dealt with. Much, much, much less of an encroachment than the one we just dealt with.
We look so shady.
I have a question. On your zoning conformance worksheet, you have. Under main structure or house. There's for lot coverage. It, it appears that you're going from thirty-three percent to thirty-seven percent. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that was based on our, yes.
So the maximum under the zoning code is thirty percent. So apparently it's currently non-conforming and you're going to be increasing that non-conformity. Is that, that's correct?
I'll double check that our area calculations were correct. Just to make sure, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that there, there are some existing non-conforming elements to the house, just given the. Yeah, the period it was built and then when the zoning code was applied, I believe it was built before the zoning code, so it might be, so, yeah.
Okay. Then for the next, for the hearing itself, could you? Double check those numbers, because if, if, if it's correct that. The house has a pre-existing non-conformity in lot coverage and that will be increased, then you'll need a variance for that. A, a pre-existing non-conformity is fine, as long as it's not increased by the project. And if you increase one, you need a variance.
Yeah. We'll take a look at that, I, I wasn't aware of that part of the zoning, I, I didn't, because. Because we were referred by the building department, so you know, we were focused on what they caught, but. This is helpful, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, you, if you look at the zoning conformance worksheet, the last, last item on the page is total lot coverage, all structured.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
You don't have any accessory buildings on this property?
No.
Only the main house? Okay. The deck does not count, does the deck have a roof?
No.
No roof, no roof on the deck, okay, well then you do not include the deck in your lot coverage.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll double check, you know. I'll go out with the laser measure and do another double check of the, you know, lot coverage and just to confirm it's, is it from the exterior? It's the exterior lot coverage, right? It's the exterior walls.
Well. Yes, exactly, that's defined in the. In the code. Exactly, it's where the, the grade, the average grade intersects with the wall or something, there's a definition in. One thirty-four dash two.
Okay.
How to do that? It's under. It's under. Cover, well, coverage is that percentage of the plot covered by the building area and then under area comma building. Total area taken on a horizontal plane at the main grade level of the principal building and all accessory buildings. Exclusive of uncovered porches, terraces and steps.
Okay.
So you take all covered. Structures, everything with a roof. And then determine the intersection. Of, of the bill, of those building areas, of those building, of those structures with the horizontal plane, plane at the main grade level.
Okay, yeah.
So yeah, it's where the exterior, exterior walls meet the grade, basically, is your starting point.
Okay.
See, we had it, how, how far out does the bump out go on of the top floor over the garage?
Are you asking about?
There appears to be a bump out, it seems like the second story over the garage extends further out than the, the wall of the garage.
Not further out, over the garage. It does extend over the, it extends over the. Side yard, over the side of the building. And then I think it's coply, oh, let me just double check, actually, we might have had to make that adjustment.
Yeah, because if you could point out that, or if you could write in on that. That your, your submitted proposals, what that. Just bump out is.
Well, actually, if you look at A seven hundred. At least I just want to make sure I'm understanding the question correctly, the, are you asking about a bump out over the, the bump out of the. A bump out of the second floor over the garage?
Well, it seems like you have a bump out over the side yard, what you just said.
Yeah, but not over the garage, it, it, the, the way that the design is, is that the second floor addition would be flush with the. The front face of the garage.
Right, so on the side, much further, does it go out from the garage? At, at grade.
Oh, I see, you're asking about that dimension, okay. I don't know if we've noted it, but I will note it, it's a few feet, it's like three feet, something, I want to say.
Three feet up to the side.
Yeah, I think so, or maybe it's like two, I, I will double check and I will note that, it's just a little bit. But I will note that. But that is not going anywhere towards the setback line at the side yard.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a conversation about this with another project that wanted to do a bump out. In fact, over the garage. And, you know, there was a little bit of dispute or some. Ambiguity, I would, I would call it in the code of what probably was intended. So it seems like we're revisiting this a little bit. And I'm just curious, and it's an issue that. You know, I'll explore further in the code provisions, but. Anyway, I'll let you continue, Eric, with ask questions, we can just get that. The dimension of what the distance is from the side of the garage bumping out to where the wall would be on the. Upper story.
Sure. No problem.
Yeah, the ambiguity that I believe John is referring to. Involves the question of whether, when you have a bump out, a second floor bump out like that. Should the lot coverage include the portion, the overhang portion? And we decided, in the other project, we decided. The code is ambiguous or maybe ambiguous, and if so. Ambiguity has to be resolved in favor of the applicant, so that would mean in this case, do not count the overhang portion.
Okay, that's helpful to know, thank you.
But in generality, bulk, you know, is taken into consideration and when you look at many other codes or. And, and most of the codes are relatively the same. When they measure area space, they measure it from the top of a building, looking down. Seeing what the, the breadth of the. The space is, you know, as compared to the land. So, that's why I just don't think our code necessarily says it directly, and again, ambiguity would be resolved in favor of the applicant, but. It's something that we have to at least look at.
Yeah, well, definitely address bulk for sure, thank you, yeah.
Another area.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did you want to carry on with that, that point, or?
Well, yes, what, what we dealt with that point would be some overhead, do we have overhead photos, aerial photos of the, of the neighborhood and how. This might appear on a, you know, a map in, in for the neighborhood to see what the spacing is between the other homes and.
I think we included. A map on page. And a, a sort of aerial view as well as the tax map on page three of seven of the. Sort of descriptive presentation, not the drawing set. It was what we found, you know.
Yeah, I see, there you go, okay.
Yeah.
That's your neighborhood right there, right?
And the red, the red dot is sort of the, yeah, that's the, that's twelve Benedict.
Okay, it's just that, so the extension will, is it going to be on the left-hand side of the house, or?
Sorry, not the right, yeah. Twelve, where it says twelve, sorry about that, yeah.
Facing the house, it'll be facing the house, it will be on the left-hand side of the house.
Right, okay.
And it's, the thing with bulk too is that we laid it out perpendicular to the street so that you wouldn't perceive the, the map, the massing. You know, it wasn't, I don't know if that is relevant to the. Angle that you're considering or the question you're considering. But by placing the addition perpendicular rather than parallel to the street, the perceived bulk is. You know, for the neighborhood is way, is sort of reduced, especially given, yeah, the side yard conditions and hedges and.
Okay, yeah, I was just making sure that we had these over. These overview sites, because it helps us to really get, which you have used, thank you.
Yeah.
Another question concerns the notices. You'll be sending out notices about the hearing to your neighbors and we need to review the list of. Neighbors that you give in your application, you've got three right now. Twenty-one Benedict, ten Benedict and eleven Benedict. The instructions say every adjoining property and in addition, we recommend that you. Give notices to anyone who has a. A, a view, a direct view of the modification. So going by that guideline, it seemed to me. Let's see, what about thirteen Benedict Road, owner Christopher Romano?
So I got the address wrong then, that's thirteen right across the street, they're new owners and the address isn't on the actual house. So that's Chris, Chris and his wife are new owners, they don't live there yet, so we never see them, so I'm not too familiar with their name. Sorry, so we'll update the form to represent thirteen and then there's also another house. Adjacent, next door to them, which is kind of catty corner to us, we could add on to the list.
Yeah, let's see. Which one is that? Category.
Yeah, so I, I don't know the exact address, my guess maybe is that's eleven, they, what's their name, the Skangas. Just recently bought and did a lot of work on that house.
Eleven is already on your list.
I think, I think Jeff, did you, were you saying that eleven was the one you thought was thirteen?
Right, correct.
So, yeah, we'll keep eleven and we'll add thirteen, right, yeah.
Okay, and then the other one I was wondering about is fifty-nine Chestnut. Which shares a backyard, back property line with you. That is adjoining and under the instructions, you should send a notice to every adjoining property, so even though they're behind you.
Yep, the Cardos, we'll, we'll send them something.
Okay.
And Eric, we have to post the sign?
Yes, and. There, there's a. You need to post a sign in front of the property, there's instructions in the application, so I'm sure you've seen that. And that you just follow the instructions on that, and then on the day of the hearing, submit to me a affidavit. And that's covered in the instructions, the affidavit simply saying that the sign has been posted. For, for the requisite period.
Okay.
Let's just. Those are the only issues I had with the, as far as completeness, did anyone, any other board members? See anything that they'd like to include, did we get a deed? A deed of a property? That's one of the things on the list of. Certificate of occupancy and deed.
So maybe I misinterpreted the, the application, I thought it said. Deed if you are not the current owner. Maybe I just misinterpreted that and then.
That's not correct, it's one copy of the deed period. If the applicant is not the owner of the property, a letter from the owner confirming approval is necessary. So one copy of the deed is needed.
Okay. And the C of O as well.
Yeah. One copy of the certificate of occupancy if applicable.
And we would just know the, the C of O would be at the building department or?
Well, yeah, I, yes, exactly, yes.
Okay.
If it was built pre-code. Pre-zoning code, there will be.
Okay.
Be good if you could confirm that since this, this house or this, that neighborhood, that street is, seems kind of. On the borderline, be good if you could confirm.
Yeah.
When this was built, so we know if we're dealing with pre-existing non-conforming or not.
It was nineteen fifty-nine, I believe.
Oh, fifty-nine, right, well, that predates the code, so. Well, that's good.
Yeah, I think that's why there's, there's. There's another, on the site plan, you can see there's existing non-conforming at the right-hand side as well. With respect to the front yard setback.
Okay.
Eric, I would think, you know, given the nature of the project in the. Ex, you know, the expansion of the footprint that. For each of the board members on their own, maybe to go out, just get a feel of it, just to take a look at the property. I, I, I think this is one of those kinds of applications where. Where it's being expanded, that it, it's better to get a, an appreciation for the size. And how it will sit on the property.
Or. Now. Would, would the applicants be available for a public hearing in two weeks from now, June third? At seven thirty PM?
Yes.
Then. I make a motion that we schedule the hearing on that day, June third, at the regular meeting.
Second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote in favor. Great, now, you'll need to send the notices out no later than Monday. Of, of this coming Monday, tomorrow I will email you a, the, the notice itself. The text of the notice, because it's a, it's a notice from this board. And then you can make copies and that will be what you'll mail to your neighbors. Use certified mail, it's, instructions are in the application, address them to each person by name, name and address. And that, and then get receipts, mailing receipts dated no later than this coming Monday. And that, that will take care of the notice requirement. And then you'll, you'll pick up a, a sign from the village clerk as described in the application. Okay, I hope I'm not forgetting anything, I think that's. And then you will add the addresses we talked about. And confirm the lot coverage. Percentage. And. And then provide the deed and the CFO. If you could just send those to to me and the village clerk when you have the the deed and the CFO.
Yeah, I'll I'll work on the checking the. Lot coverage early next week. Does that work to get it to you by midweek?
Yes.
Okay.
Just by the meeting, anytime before the meeting's fine.
Okay, great.
Or at the meeting.
Okay, good.
Actually, well. Technically, I guess the notice is supposed to specify the nature of the variances required. I think, and since that has to be written tomorrow, it seems likely, do you agree that? You are increasing the lot coverage with this? Is or or not?
Yeah, I want to double check because, you know. We, we initially took the measurements. For the existing a little while ago, so I just want to double check just so that I'm double accurate, you know, or more accurate, so. I guess. I guess if if we find out that it's not. If we find out that it's not actually. I mean, no matter what, it's going to be increasing. So even if we're at thirty percent, we're going to be increasing from thirty to. Well, you know. For a four percent change from whatever it is, so. We're about that, so. Yeah, I guess I would say it's likely. I'm not hundred percent certain, but yeah, it is likely. Yeah, I guess we can assume that. And then.
We can, it sounds to me from what you're saying, the best course of action would be to include that. As one of the variances in the notice. And then if it turns out that. No variance is needed, well, we can just announce that at the hearing. And we would just not worry about that point.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds right. Sorry, I. My thought process is a little slow right now, but yes, exactly. You said it well.
So Eric, if I could ask one quick question, just so I I understand designs and plans and everything. The. Second story, is that going to project further out to from the front of the house from what I see?
No, that's on page A seven hundred of the drawing plans. That section shows how. That's a section through the long. Portion of the building and it shows you how that garage is flush, that front garage, the left hand side, you can see. It's labeled garage and it has a car in it and then right above it, the bedroom and they're flush.
And and A seven hundred is page five of six.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. But 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 currently that portion of the garage where the car is in does not exist.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you're build, you're building forward out from the house.
Exactly. In the plan, the site plan shows, I believe, the difference between. Yeah, you can see we've hatched the difference of. Oh, I guess, yeah, you can't really see how far we've built, we're building out, but yeah. You can. If you compare the. On this, on the second page, C one hundred, if you just, you can compare the existing footprint of the site plan to the proposed footprint. On the right hand side. Does that help?
Yeah, you were going in and out. I think other people probably had similar problems. Unless it was just my home. But I I I just wanted to ask you to confirm that I'm seeing the build out goes from the. What is currently the front of the house and projects further closer to the road. That's what the issue of the variant.
Yes.
But here at the house, where that second story is going to. Reach the back, that's, there's already a one-story. Structure there and it's just going to follow that. Current back wall of that second, okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
So what we're looking at for potential. The additional footprint is really what's projecting out from the front of the house, the current front face.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any further questions right now.
Neither do I.
Everyone else, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then. We're all done with the workshop. We have scheduled the hearing for two weeks from now. And I think you're good to go.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
It's again for your time.
Thanks for your time.
The only other thing was review of our last minutes. Are is everybody up to that at this hour?
Sure, let's do it.
I'll abstain because I wasn't there. So.
Yeah.
Well, since Laura wasn't there, some of the members weren't there. Do you think we should just go through it or do it the next time? It's up to you. I don't want to keep them waiting.
Hey, let's, let's go through it now. I really saw only two things, two minor things. They're pretty, they're pretty good.
Agreed. Now, what 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 email under what would it be under Jeff's name or what?
Yeah, Jeff sent it, I think, two days ago. It's dated five seventeen, three days ago.
Okay.
Yeah, VCS clerk.
Yes, thank you very much. That helps. This way you can pull it right up.
What were your two items, Eric, that you saw?
Yeah. This. Page one, under the heading Public Hearing. First sentence refers to a variance for front yard setback. It's actually front and side yard setbacks because they technically they need two setbacks, although. The side, you know, the side yard setback is is less, less of an issue.
Okay.
And then the other thing. A little lower down where it says E worth clarified. The first bullet point lot width. It says. There is no proposed change of use. I don't think that language is correct. It should say there is no increase in the non-conformity of this dimension. So current width is thirty-five feet. Lot is pre-existing non-conforming and there is no increase in the non-conformity of this dimension.
That sounds better.
That's more precise, I think.
I agree.
That was the.
And then. The the next bullet. Well, indented, second indented bullet underneath that. Jay Martin commented that the total lot coverage needs to confirm, so either needs confirmed or needs to be confirmed. And included as part of the record.
Yep, that's right.
Otherwise, looks good to me.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine. I'm fine with the minutes. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, well done. All right.
Mary Ann and Laura, any? Any corrections?
I I don't think they were there at the meeting.
Oh, that's right. You're you're recusing.
Yeah, and the other thing. Mentioned to to spare Jeff this time around. He doesn't have to put in a whole statement about our resolution today. We we just refer.
Oh, I remember that one.
I I wanted to save you from right.
Yeah, otherwise it'd be ten pages long.
Yeah. So I moved to close the meeting. I think we have no more business, right?
First, we have to, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May sixth as amended.
I second that.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, unanimous, three. Three plus two recusals. John's made a motion that we close the hearing or close the meeting.
Meeting.
Is there any other business, though? Anyone?
I was just thinking about, let me just mention offhand, just to do a site visit. I think it's just sort of important on this one. I mean, because, you know, because of the bulk issue. That I, so everybody has to decide for themselves. If you don't make it to get to there, that's fine, but.
I already went by.
Okay, great. Excellent. All right, Mary Ann.
I I would just like to know from Mary Ann and Laura, you know, how we showed up on YouTube for the both of you. In the last meeting.
I admitted to Keith that I watched it. You can increase the speed. And still retain, I I I do it in all circumstances. When I watch a video where that's possible, you can increase it a little bit. So you guys sounded great. You sound a little higher pitch.
Like chipmunks.
I watched it on regular speed. You are all great.
I didn't realize that they were available like that. I think that's a good kind of transparency piece and so I was, that's glad to know it.
I I'm glad to know too, because it had me reflecting on, gosh, what did I say for, you know. Conversation sake that maybe I don't want to have recorded.
Well, it's being recorded now, so.
Just like I said, the application today was harder than Bitcoin going down.
Yeah.
Well, I I checked. It didn't, your your comments didn't shutter the market any further. We'll see once it hits YouTube, John.
I have, I have, I have no influence. I'm just an average Joe.
I'm I'm seconding John's motion that we end the meeting. All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for everything.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.